Good evening, everyone. I would like to welcome the members of council, staff, and members of the public to our October 28th council meeting and call this meeting to order. At this time, I'd like to ask Mrs. Pearson for the roll call, please.
Thank you, your worship, and we do have regrets from Deputy Mayor Field as he is unwell this evening, along with Counselor Patel. Counselor Clark?
Present.
Counselor Hyatt?
Present.
Counselor O'Hara?
Present.
Counselor Patel.
Counselor Welsh?
Present.
Deputy Mayor Field. Mayor Lucley?
Present.
We have a quorum, your worship.
Thank you. And at this time, I'd like to ask Mrs. Pearson for the Indigenous land acknowledgement, please.
We acknowledge that this land on which we are gathered today is part of the ancestral land of the Chipewa, the Odoawa, and the Potoatami peoples referred to collectively as the Anishna Bag. The town of Petrollia is located on the land associated with the Huron Track Treaty, number 29 of 1827. We express gratitude for the land where we live, work, and play, and we are committed to working respectfully with the land and with the Indigenous peoples who have called this land home.
Thank you, Mrs. Pearson. At this time, I'd like to request counsel if there's anyone that would like to declare a conflict of interest for this agenda now or at the appropriate time and complete the necessary paperwork. Seeing none, we'll move on to the adoption of the agenda. You have a motion before you to adopt the agenda. I'll ask for a mover and a seconder to put that on the floor for discussion. Moved by Counselor Clark, seconded by Counselor Hyatt. I'll ask the clerk to read that motion, please.
And that is for the council of the town of Petrollia to adopt as presented the agenda of the October 28th, 2024 regular session of council.
Thank you. Any questions from council? If not, I'll call the vote. All those in favor of approving that motion, opposed, that motion carries. That'll take us now to the adoption of the minutes of a regular council meeting held on October 15th. I'll ask for a mover and a seconder to put that, those minutes on the floor for discussion. Moved by Counselor O'Hara, seconded by Counselor Welsh. I'll ask the clerk to read that motion, please.
That is for the council of the town of Petrollia to adopt as circulated minutes of the regular meeting of council held on October 15th, 2024.
Thank you. Any questions from council? Errors or omissions? Seeing none, I'll call the vote. All those in favor of approving that motion, opposed, that motion carries. That'll take us on now to the, the minutes of a council education session held on October 15th. I'll ask for a mover and a seconder to put that motion on the floor for discussion, please. Moved by Counselor Hyatt, seconded by Counselor Clark. I'll ask the clerk to read that motion, please.
That is for the council of the town of Petrollia to adopt as circulated minutes of the education session of council held on October 15th, 2024.
Thank you. Any questions from council? Seeing none, I'll call the vote. All those in favor of approving that motion, opposed, that motion carries. That'll take us on to number eight. For the moment of reflection, I'd like to ask that everyone please stand. Thank you, please be seated. Okay, that'll take us to our roundtable announcements. And again, as we, council is aware of, I rotate this and who starts. And tonight, we start off with Counselor O'Hara, please.
All I have is that I attended the St. Clair Conservation Authority on last Thursday, and they got a sizable grant from the government of seven and a half million or something like that to be used over, over four years to monitoring phosphorus that they're in the Sidenham River and the basin there. That's all.
Thank you, Counselor O'Hara. We'll go to Counselor Welsh, please.
Just that we had another very successful fiery faces event with Kiwanis out at Petrollia Discovery. I would guesstimate over 500 people attended over the course of the weekend. And Petrollia Heritage hosted the Lampton Historical Society Annual Dinner here at Victoria Hall, and everybody was very well fed.
That's great. Thank you, Counselor Welsh. All right, Counselor Clark, please.
I have nothing at this time.
Okay, thank you. Counselor Hyatt?
Nothing to share, thank you.
Okay, thank you. Well, I have a few things, so bear with me. I attended the county committee meeting held on Wednesday, October 16th, and will continue to keep council informed. I also attended the Lampton Group OPP Detachment Board Meeting held on Wednesday, October 16th, and council will see a copy of the minutes at a later date. I attended the Sarnia Lampton Chamber of Commerce After Five Event at the International Symphony Building located at 170 Christina North on Wednesday, October 16th. It was a great event and a good time had by all. I was also invited to attend the VON SMART Program, that is Seniors Maintaining Active Roles Together, on Thursday, October 17th. It was called Flight Path to Fitness in Celebration of 30 Years and was held at DeGroot's nurseries. There was a brief exercise program, light refreshments, and there was a good turnout, and everyone had a good time. I attended the community groups presentation held at the Pathways Health Center on Thursday, October 17th. Checks were handed out to a number of organizations, and each organization spoke on their planned projects. There was a good turnout and a great event, and again, this was held in Sarnia. I took part in the Lampton County Local Government Week, Ontario Public Library Week events for children's book reading at the Petrollia Library on Friday, October 18th. I read for the baby rhyme time, "I Love Old McDonald's Farm", by Senator Maggersman. Everyone had a good time, including me. I also attended the fifth anniversary for Visions First Affordable Housing Project in Sarnia on October 18th and brought greetings on behalf of Petrollia Council and staff. There was a good turnout, a fun event, and I also had a tour of the facility. I also attended a Sports Hall of Fame event that announced the winners at the Dauntie Club on October 19th. I brought greetings on behalf of Petrollia Council and staff. There was a large turnout and was a good organized event. All mayors were invited, but Mike Bradley, Mayor of Sarnia, and Jeff Agar from St. Clair and myself were the only three in attendance. I spoke to the grade six and seven students from St. Philip's School about the makeup and process during a council meeting, followed by a short tour of Victoria Hall. Special thanks to Mrs. Mandy Pearson, Clerk Operations Clerk, who also spoke, and Mrs. Leanne Baker, Executive Assistant, for all her help. It was a good event with some good questions. I attended the Legion Brands 216 Flag Raising Ceremony and Pinning of the Poppies to start the sales of poppies in the town of Petrollia and surrounding area on Friday, October 25th, 2024, another very successful event. And if you haven't purchased a poppy, please do so. I took part in the hunting and historical tour organized by the IODE on Saturday, October 25th and 26th. I was placed at Baines Machine Shop on October 26th. It was an interesting and fun event. Friday night, they had 133 people go through Baines, and I believe 108 went through on Saturday. And that's all I have. That'll move us on now to an update from the different councillors representing the draft committees. First on my list is the Petrollia Heritage Advisory Committee. I'd like to ask for a verbal update, and please note there are no minutes. They'll be deferred to the next meeting. The members are Counselor Welsh and Counselor Field. I guess Counselor Welsh, you're up, please.
I don't really have anything because we don't have the minutes, so.
Okay. Thank you. I'll move on now to Parks and Recreation. I'd like to ask for a brief update, and there are minutes that we'll put on for discussion and approval later on. So we have Counselor Clark and Counselor Hyatt. Who would like to give the brief update? Counselor Hyatt, go ahead, please.
Thank you. I think most of the minutes are pretty self-explanatory, but you know, we talked about, talked about budget for 2025. Kind of got a recap on some of the projects and some of the events that happened in 2024. Looking forward to what's going to happen at the end of 2024 for 150 celebrations. Daffodil planting will take place in the cemetery.
Oh, good.
I'm sure if anyone would like to volunteer, they will probably take a few extra hands. So that's Saturday, Friday, and Saturday of this weekend, 10 o'clock Friday, 10 o'clock Saturday. So anyone that would like to volunteer, come on in.
All right. Thank you, Counselor Hyatt. Correct me if I'm wrong, are those flowers all being donated by Windover Nurseries?
Yes.
Correct, correct me if I'm wrong?
If I may?
Yeah, go ahead.
They're actually being organized by Windover Nurseries and through the Legion, the Optimists, the Rotary, several service clubs within Petrollia have donated for the purchase of those daffodils.
Okay, good. Thank you for that. I didn't know that. All right, I'd like to ask for a motion to, to put those minutes on the floor for approval. Would you like to move that, Counselor Hyatt? Seconded by Counselor Clark. Any discussion regarding those minutes? All those in favor of approving those minutes, opposed, that motion carries. And I forgot to read that. Sorry, Mrs. Pearson, we'll do it on the next one. Petrollia Youth Advisory Committee. We have Counselor Patel and Counselor Hyatt. I guess Counselor Hyatt, you're up for just a brief verbal report, please.
Yeah, unfortunately, the last meeting, I was only available for 10 minutes or so. I was gone away for business work, but I believe the general discussion was just on the Yes Summit and doing some preparation work, establishing updates from the subcommittee on what they're planning for Yes 2025.
Great, thank you. And again, we'll have the minutes for the next meeting. All right, that'll move us on to the Municipal Services and Traffic. We have Counselor Hyatt, and of course, Counselor, Deputy Mayor Field is not present. I'd like to ask for a verbal update, and then there's a motion for approval later. Counselor Hyatt, go ahead, please.
Thank you. Just some, some notes that have been shared with me. The, the deficiency, the efficiency list for Tank Street has been completed, so that work is, is wrapped up. The department is working on some grant applications for the Housing Enabling Water System Fund 2.0. So that grant application will be going in very shortly. Last compost day for 2024 is this coming weekend. And wood chipping, I believe, is wrapped up for the season.
Okay. Thank you, Counselor Hyatt. And again, would you move that we approve that motion? Moved by Counselor Hyatt, I'll need a seconder, please. Seconded by Counselor Welsh, I'll ask the clerk to read that motion, please.
And that is for the council of the town of Petrollia to receive and file Counselor Hyatt's update on municipal service happenings.
Any further questions regarding those minutes? If not, I'll call the vote. All those in favor, opposed, that motion carries. That'll take us now to planning and development. We have Deputy Mayor Field, of course, is away. Counselor Welsh is here. I'd like to ask for an update, and then also, we'd like to, there is a motion for approval at the end. So Counselor Welsh, would you like to give us a verbal update, please?
Okay. It was a pretty basic and brief meeting. We talked about downtown parking, tidy yard order, and a continued review of a site plan application for significant building renovation.
Okay, thank you. And would you like to move that motion before you? Moved by Counselor Welsh, seconded by Counselor Clark. I'll ask the clerk to read that motion, please.
And that is that the council of the town of Petrollia receive and file Counselor Welsh's update on planning and development happenings.
Any discussion from council? All those in favor of approving that motion, that motion carries. That'll take us on to correspondence. We have items A to E. I'd like to ask for a motion to put that on the floor for discussion, and if any councillor wishes to pull any items out. I'll need a mover and a seconder. Moved by Counselor Welsh, seconded by Counselor Clark. And I'll ask, any discussion regarding those? If not, I'll ask the clerk to read that motion, please.
And that is for the council of the town of Petrollia to receive and file correspondence items 11A through E.
Any questions from council? Okay, seeing none, I'll call the vote. All those in favor of approving that motion, opposed, that motion carries. That'll take us on to item number 12, Correspondence for Consideration Motion. This is a request to waive fees from the Community Futures Lampton. I'll ask for a mover and a seconder to put that on the floor for discussion, please. Moved by Counselor Welsh, seconded by Counselor Hyatt. Before I open it up to council, I'd like to ask Mrs. Bullock for her comments, please.
Absolutely. So this is for a monthly rental of the Kirk Cafe. Looking at the current fee schedule, it would be about $60 per day for each of these daily rentals. So yeah, that's kind of the basics. And Miss Riem had, was just basically looking for relief of those fees she has. She is going into, into other municipalities where she was able to secure space for free at other municipalities, so.
Okay, thank you, Mrs. Bullock. I think my concern is, are we setting any kind of precedent for other groups that are paying for it now? That's just something to think about, but we'll open it up to council. Any discussions from council? Counselor Welsh?
So this is formerly Sarnia Lampton Business Development Corporation. This is their new name that they're operating under. And they come in and help small businesses in the community. So that's basically their focus, I think, for what, they're going to meet small businesses, which I think is a, is a bonus to have them here in our community rather than have our people have to travel to Sarnia to meet with them.
Thank you. Any other questions from council? Counselor O'Hara, how are they funded? I can, well, she's looking that up. I, it's, I think 50% is from the county of Lampton. I could be a little off, but I think, I believe, I know the county of Lampton do fund it, and I think it's 50%. Counselor Welsh?
Fed Dev Southwestern Ontario is who funds them, unless something's changed. Fed, Federal Economic Development for Southwestern Ontario funds them.
All right, any other questions from council? Then I'd like to ask, I'll need some direction from council. Need a motion to put on the floor for consideration or receive and file it. But Counselor Welsh?
I'll move that we waive the fees.
Okay, I'll need a seconder for that. Seconded by Counselor Clark. Any discussion? Counselor Hyatt?
Just wondering if we can set a duration for which we're going to waive.
For time here?
Is it for three months or six months based? I don't know how long this contract is going for. Is this for the full year or is it for a defined period?
Go ahead, Mrs. Bullock.
Through you, your worship. Currently, it is set up for a one-year rental, so I think it starts in October of this year and goes till September of next year.
So the mover and a seconder would agree with adding one year?
And it's just once a month, sorry?
Once, I believe it's once a month, roughly $60, you thought?
Yeah, according to the fee schedule, basically, the, the charge, if we were to charge them, would be $60.
Okay. All right. Any other questions from council? I'll ask the clerk to put something together and read it back, so we're all clear on what we're voting for.
That would be that the council of the town of Petrollia waived the fees as requested for a period of one year.
Counselor Hyatt?
Wondering if we can amend it to also ask for an update after six months as to how the activity is progressing with the town.
I think that's a great idea. Thank you for that. Move and second are okay with that?
Absolutely.
So if you can add that, Mrs. Pearson? All right. I'll call the vote. All those in favor, opposed, that motion carries. Thank you. That'll take us to delegations and presentations. We do not have any tonight. Community announcements, recognitions, and awards are not listed for tonight. This will bring us to the first opportunity for anyone wishing to address council. I'll ask the clerk, is there anyone that's been registered ahead of time?
Thank you, your worship. No, there is nobody registered.
Thank you. I'll open it up for those present, anyone wishing to address council at this time. Seeing none, we'll move on to the financial accounts report. We have a motion before you. I'll ask for a mover and a seconder to put that motion on the floor for discussion. Moved by Counselor Clark, seconded by Counselor O'Hara. I'll ask the clerk to read that motion, please.
And that is for the council of the town of Petrollia to receive and file the August 31st, 2024 through October 22nd, 2024, general financial accounts.
And I'll just like to ask Counselor O'Hara, who sits on that, do you have anything you'd like to add?
No, I don't.
Thank you. All right, I'll call the vote. All those in favor of approving those accounts, opposed, that motion carries. And also, we have an additional one. I know Deputy Mayor Field's not here tonight, but I'll ask for a mover and a seconder to put that motion on the floor for discussion. Moved by Counselor Clark, seconded by Counselor Hyatt. I'll ask the clerk to read that motion, please.
Thank you, and that is for the council of the town of Petrollia to receive and file the August 31st, 2024 through October 22nd, 2024, Lampton Sanitation Accounts.
Any questions from council? All those in favor, opposed, that motion carries. That moves us on to item number 17. Regarding administration, we have a report from our senior planner, Mr. Trevor Benjamins, regarding Provincial Planning Statement 2024 Information Report. And you received that report with your agenda. I'll ask for a mover and a seconder to put that on the floor for discussion, please. Moved by Counselor Hyatt, seconded by Counselor Welsh. Any questions from council? Mr. Benjamins, do you have anything you'd like to add?
Not at this time, thanks.
Okay, thank you. I'll, I'll ask the...
Nope.
Read that motion, please.
That is for the council of the town of Petrollia to receive and file the report of Mr. Trevor Benjamins, Senior Planner, dated October 28th, 2024, regarding the 2024 PPS.
Okay, any questions from council? All those in favor of approving that, opposed, that motion carries. And again, thank you for that report. Mr. Benjamin's quite detailed, but it was very good. That'll move us on to Fire and Emergency Management. We have a report from Fire Cousins, Mr. Rick Cousins, Fire Chief, regarding the third quarter report. I'll ask for a mover and a seconder to put that on the floor for discussion, please. Moved by Counselor Hyatt, seconded by Counselor Clark. I'll ask the clerk to read that motion, please.
And that is for the council of the town of Petrollia to receive and file the report of the Director of Public Safety Fire Chief dated this 28th day of October, 2024, regarding the third quarter report for the Petrollia North Anaskillan Fire Department.
Any questions from council? Chief Cousins, do you have anything you'd like to add?
No, not at this time.
Okay, thank you. All right, I'll call the vote. All those in favor of approving that report, opposed, that motion carries. Again, thank you, Chief Cousins, for that report. That'll move us on now to operations from Mr. Mike Thompson, Director of Operations regarding the Waste Management Introduction of Cart Collection in Petrollia. There is a motion before you. I'll ask for a mover and a seconder to put that on the floor for discussion, please. Moved by Counselor Welsh, seconded by Counselor Hyatt. I'll ask the clerk to read that motion, please.
And that is for the council of the town of Petrollia to receive and file the report of the Director of Operations regarding the introduction of automatic carts for waste collection, and that the amendment by law before council tonight be endorsed.
Any questions from council? Counselor Welsh?
Questions, please. Um, the, for, no, it won't be a problem after November the 1st when people can't park on the street. But what is, where, on my street, on Queen Street, by 7:00 AM, the street is full of vehicles from St. Philip's staff.
Counselor Welsh, you'll dirt dress through the chair, please. Yeah.
Um, Queen Street is full of cars, and I'm wondering where the residents should put their bins. I mean, it's not going to be a problem until they can do on-street parking again.
Mr. Thompson, would you like to address that?
Yeah, through your worship. I would suggest probably as close as they could to their driveway for obvious reasons, because hopefully, no one parks too close. We could, yeah, I know. I mean, we always have certain streets that have lots of, you know, Queen Street in particular, but I think off the top of my head, First Ave as well. So I think it might be challenging some days. We could take a look at potentially putting some parking blocks by those driveways on streets that have a lot of on-street parking, but that's a very good point, Counselor Welsh. I should maybe look into that. Yeah, I never really thought of that, but off the top of my head, I can think of only probably Queen Street at First Ave when it comes to, I know it's not called Fidex anymore, but whatever it's called. But yeah, I know, I mean, my house, we have bins in Wyoming as well, and I have five cars, and it's challenging where they all park and stuff like that. But yeah, I can look into that. But I think, you know, close to the apron of the driveway, if they have it out by 7:00, you'd think people parking on the road would be conscious of that. But yeah, it's going to be challenging. I mean, the change isn't easy, and, but I think it can be through it, but I can take a look. Yeah.
Do you have a second question, Counselor Welsh? Go ahead.
Um, the main street, have people communicated with the merchants and the property owners on the main street?
Waste management is going to, through your worship, waste management is going to be communicating with those merchants, yes.
Counselor Clark?
I just had a comment on the second page of the report. It has, there's going to be an open house on Thursday, November 13th, but I believe that's, Thursday is the 14th.
Oh, would you speak to that? I can correct that?
That has been corrected, yes. It is Wednesday.
Wednesday, the 13th.
13th, correct, yeah.
Thank you, Counselor Clark, for that. This is a big change for the community, and hopefully, with press picking this up, we can try and let the people know even ahead of time before the, all the information goes out. Counselor O'Hara, what do we do with our containers we're using now? Well, I think everyone is going to get a container no matter what. Is that not correct, Mr. Thompson?
Yeah, through your worship, so your existing garbage can?
Yeah, and blue boxes. Get back to me.
Yeah.
They throw them in the garbage, but.
No, no. Yeah, I think there'll be a number of blue boxes we'll have to consider.
Yeah. Yeah.
Through, through.
Yeah, go ahead.
People could still use those, those entities. They just end up putting them into the, the wheelie bins. So if you had your wheelie bins located in an area that might not be that accessible, you fill up your blue box and empty your blue box into your wheelie bin, or have your bags of garbage, if you have one just outside your, your door of your garage or something, then you can communicate that to your wheelie bin. So I think there'll still be uses. Unfortunately, people have very, or I should say fortunately, people have lots of creative ideas for recycling bins. We've seen them as wood boxes, and yeah, I think they just get repurposed.
All right, thank you, Mrs. Pearson. Counselor Welsh?
Mine are going to be rain barrels.
Yeah. Okay, yeah, thank you. Any other questions from council? Oh, sorry, Counselor Hyatt?
Thank you, through you, mine's just related to the fee schedule. There's a line item for like garbage bag tags for people that have excessive garbage. If they need to get rid of it, they can purchase through Town Hall. Will that program still remain, or will that program be removed?
Would you like to speak to that, Mr. Thompson?
Through your worship, Counselor Hyatt? Yeah, there will be no pickup of bags. Everything needs to go in the bin. It's fully automated, so that'll be taken out of the fee schedule.
Okay, thank you, Mr. Thompson. I want to clarify too, I know we've all read it, but I want to make it clear to everyone that this, that's being provided to the homeowners at no cost. And I bring that forward because in other municipalities, they had to pay for those, in some of them, not all of them. But anyway, in Petrollia, you will be obtaining those, but you will not be paying for those. Any other questions from council? Counselor Welsh?
They require a second bin, they can purchase those?
But my understanding is you would have to buy that. Is that not correct, Mr. Thompson? If you destroy, or you, or you mean just to have an extra?
Extra bin. You might need more than one trash bin.
Through, I'd have to look into that. We, we haven't had that discussion with waste management. I would assume if a family had, if the bag, if a family can survive with the bag limit today, I think there is enough, you'll probably find you can fit more garbage in these bins. We have a bin in our house, and it's unbelievable how much garbage you can put in there. We have a family of five, and I believe these are bigger than the ones we have in Wyoming. So I think you'd be surprised. I can look into that, Counselor Welsh, and get back to you, and get back to council.
We still have to remember, we have a three-bag limit. We have a bylaw stating we can only have three bags of garbage. And just as clarification, I use Lampton Shores as an example. The garbage container is probably half the size of the recycling container. It's, you can barely get two bags in that garbage. And I, again, I know that from my cottage, but the recycling bin is huge. So anyway, just for your information. Any other questions from council? I think we've read that, I'll call the vote. All those in favor of approving that motion, opposed, that motion carries. That'll bring us now to the second opportunity to address council. Anyone wishing to address council? Please come forward, state your name and address for the record, please.
Hello, my name is Sheri Hamilton, 287 Evergreen Trail here in Petrollia. I would concur, Mr. Mayor, with Counselor Welsh that I think these large bins at the base of driveways can be problematic. I live on a cul-de-sac, which means we have three driveways in very close proximity at the mouth of that street, not to mention that is a main intersection where we see our school buses come through. And we have a lot of small children, little people, that can disappear in sightlines behind garbage cans. So I really think that's an issue that has to be looked at as well, where they're going to be placed, and if there is a, a large number of them in one spot, especially when we have so many children in some of the subdivisions. I've counted 20 kids out in front of my house in the morning, and the last bus, I think, leaves at 8:30. So if you put your garbage out there at 7:00, you have all these little tiny tikes running around in and amongst the driveways on the street near the buses. running around in and amongst the driveways on the street near the buses, so I do have a, a little bit of a concern about that. Um, the other issue, Mr. Mayor, is as your representative on the Senior Citizens Advisory Committee, I read this, uh, motion coming forward, and I thought, has anyone considered that frail, tiny, little 90-year-old woman who lives alone? How heavy are these bins? And once there's garbage in them, how are these elderly individuals with maybe mobility issues going to get that cart to the end of a driveway, particularly if the driveway has any slope? Is it gonna be a runaway cart? Um, so we have to consider our seniors. We do have a large proportion of them here. And I, I'm really concerned about how they're gonna be able to maneuver these big garbage bins to the end of their driveway and then return them back to wherever they're storing them. So I just wanted to bring that forward. Um, I feel it's my obligation to speak for those people who aren't available tonight.
Well, thank you for that, and I, I'd like to add too, even presently, some of the seniors uh, are already getting a little bit of help from the people picking up garbage now. So they do consider some of the seniors, but that's a good point. Thank you. Thank you for addressing council. Anyone else wishing to address council at this time? If not, we'll move on now to New Unfinished Business. We do have a motion that's been, a notice, a motion that needs to be dealt with tonight. Motion from Counselor Ross O'Hare regarding public information requirements. And, uh, Counsel O'Hara moved that. We'll need a seconder. But even before we get to that, I just want to ask, um, our planner, um, is this issue being dealt with in, uh, the new legislation?
Um, through your worship, eh, it is already, it's changed under the Planning Act, and it's already been changed. Um, it is also being proposed to change as a part of the county official plan review process.
And what's the timeline on that? Is there a timeline? And the only reason I'm asking, this motion, would, would it maybe speed up the process?
Um, through your worship, I'm not sure if I can answer if it would speed up the process at this time, um, but I think it's around a two- to three-year process. It is quite an undertaking.
Okay, all right, thank you. I just, just for my information. So you've moved that, Counsel O'Hara. I'll need a seconder to put this motion on the floor for further discussion. Seconded by Counselor Hyatt. I will ask the clerk to read that motion, please, so we're clear on it.
Whereas the province removed the requirement for public meeting for draft plans of subdivision, however, the county, the county official plan still requires a public meeting for a draft plan of subdivision. Canada is experiencing housing crisis, and both the federal and provincial governments are focused on building more homes faster. The county should remove the public meeting requirement to become consistent with the provincial policy. Now therefore be it resolved that the Council of the Town of Petrolia recommend that the county, Lampton County Council, consider amending its official plan to be consistent with the provincial policy and remove the requirement for a public meeting for draft plans of subdivision. And furthermore, that this resolution be forwarded to all Lampton County municipalities.
Okay. Any questions for council? Counsel O'Hara, go ahead.
I request a recorded vote.
Okay. Um, again, I'll just ask council, is there any other questions or clarification? Counselor Hyatt, go ahead, please.
Uh, thank you, through you, maybe, uh, to Mr. Benjamins. This, this, well, this motion won't make the process go any faster with the county, through your opinion?
Uh, through your worship, I can't say for certain whether or not it would at this time, unfortunately.
Yeah, that, that's a difficult question, yeah.
Yeah, it's a difficult question to answer, um, but we, we are required to be obviously consistent with that, so it will be addressed through the county official plan review, but whether or not it would be done before that, I can't say for certain.
The review is already in process, or the up, the update is already?
Yes, I, it, it's kicking off very shortly, yes.
Uh, I just want to clarify, you mentioned possibly two or three years? Would it take that long?
I think it's a two-year, probably closer to a two-year process, but it is quite a process.
Okay, thank you. Any other questions from council? Counsel Welsh.
I just have some comments about it. Um, I think, as everybody knows, like, I don't like removing the public from any of our decisions. Um, because we sit here at their pleasure, and in fact, the, the new provincial planning statement, not policy statement, does in fact encourage public consultation in Section 6.2. Um, the county OP references the public 118 times. The Petrolia OP references the public 133 times. Um, and Trevor's already stated that we have, they have to comply with the current legislation. But we are here at the pleasure of the public, and we are doing everything in, for the public. We are making decisions for the public. Um, I, I think we still need meetings. It doesn't have to be formal meetings. I think they should be informal meetings to, um, show the public what is happening, because significant development processes, they have an, an impact on their daily life. Um, we're seeing that now with, with our own South Quad, blah, South Quadrant right now. Um, the provincial legislation has already made it all but impossible for anybody to appeal any of these things. So they're, they're going through basically anyway, and our residents have a right to be informed. Um, it enhances trust in the civic process, and ensures that the facts are correctly, correctly communicated. Um, and we need to keep the public engaged in the processes and not stifle that. Um, in fact, AMO is running community engagement workshops in 2025 for councillors and, um, staff members. Uh, the public info session won't slow down the process. Uh, you can do it anytime when they're ready to go. Nobody can appeal it, so it's just an info session. Um, and we're quite literally responsible for making the decisions that significantly and personally impact every, our residents' daily lives. Um, so I would never push to remove public meetings.
Okay, thank you. Counsel Hyatt.
Through you, maybe to Mr. Benjamins again. Uh, currently, how, how long does the, having the public meeting add to the process? Does it add any time to the process at all, or is it, like, we're having the meetings because we need to share the information?
Through your worship to Counsel Hyatt, um, I think it probably does add maybe one or two weeks, but that's probably it.
What's the total duration of, say, like, we're talking one or two weeks and 50 weeks, or?
Uh, each application is so different from one another, um, it's, it's really hard to answer that. Um, for a standard draft plan of subdivision, we are required to make a decision uh, within 120 days of deeming it complete. Um, so one or two weeks will probably not add a significant or reduce a significant, significant amount of time. Um, planning staff, staff obviously strive to make this, to have council make decisions within those allotted timelines, so. Hopefully that answers the question.
Thank you. Good, thank you. Okay, any other questions from council? Okay, if not, uh, Counsel O'Hara's requested a recorded vote. I'll turn it over to our clerk, Mrs. Pearson, please.
Thank you, and just a reminder, we do have two absent members of council who, obviously, they won't be called for, for a vote. Counselor Clark, for or against?
Against.
Counselor Hyatt, for or against?
Against.
Counselor O'Hara, for or, or against?
For.
Counselor Welsh, for or against?
Against.
Your worship, for or against?
I'm for it.
Okay, your worship, that does, uh, three to two is that vote.
Well, that motion's not carried. Okay, we also have an additional one from Mr. Counselor Chai, Hyatt. Uh, that will continue on to our next meeting unless council wishes to deal with it tonight. And seeing none, we'll move on to the consideration of the bylaws. I'll ask for a mover and a seconder to approve or to approve those bylaws being read a first and second time. Moved by Counselor Hyatt, seconded by Counselor Welsh. Um, all those in favor? Opposed, that motion carries, and I'll ask for a motion to have the bylaws read a third time, signed, sealed, and numbered. I'll need a mover and a seconder. Moved by Counselor Hyatt, seconded by Counselor Clark. I'll ask the clerk to read that mo, those motions, please.
And that is for Bylaw Number 45 of 2024, Being a Bylaw of the Corporation of the Town of Petrolia to amend Bylaw 07 of 2017, A Bylaw with Waste Management Canada for the Collection of Waste and Recycling in the Town of Petrolia, be read a third time and finally passed. That Bylaw Number 46 of 2024, Being a Bylaw of the Corporation of the Town of Petrolia to confirm the resolutions and motions of the Council of the Town of Petrolia, which were adopted up to and including October 28th, 2024, be read a third time and finally passed.
Thank you, Mrs. Pearson. Any questions? All those in favor of approving those bylaws? Opposed, that motion carries. Just before I ask for a motion to adjourn, I want to remind all of council of the November 11th Remembrance Day Service out in Victoria Park. Also, there'll be a service at 2 o'clock this coming Sunday, uh, in the park. There'll be the laying of the wreaths. And I also want to remind council of the actual Remembrance Day Dinner at the Legion on the 11th, and there are $25 a ticket. And I'll just ask for a motion that we adjourn. Moved by Counselor Clark, seconded by Counselor Welsh. I'll ask the clerk to read that motion, please.
And that is for the October 28th, 2024, Meeting of the Council of the Town of Petrolia to be adjourned to the next regular scheduled meeting of council to be held on Tuesday, November the 12th, 2024, or at the call of the chair.
Any discussion? All those in favor? Opposed, that motion carries. Thank you, everyone, for coming. Have a good night.